The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Sorry for the tight quarters that we have this evening. But I think we will have probably a very short meeting tonight. The first thing is the approval of the official agenda. We've gone through this with some revisions and consent items. Mr. McLaren?
This may involve your consideration tonight for possible placement on the consent agenda. On page two, page two. It is recommended in Roman numeral eight, number A, that the second public hearing on the sidewalk ordinance be postponed, given our cramped conditions and the fact that a number of individuals that wanted to hear and participate in that discussion were not able to be here. So it's recommended that that be postponed until the next meeting. And thus, number 10A, the motion that might be associated with that to be postponed. Items C and D, and these appear to be added at the last minute to the agenda, would recommend that they be postponed till we have a full board present. We have considered all the projects relative to our street drainage improvements as a full board, and a full board is not here. Here is yet another attempt to change the list, the approved list.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You might be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any problem with delaying this, but you know, any member of the board can bring anything that he or she desires. So it's not up to any person to actually just critique what someone does. Yes, I am the requesting party for Roman numeral 10C to be on the agenda, and what Roman numeral 10C speaks to power of drive, but I'm not going to get into that. But I just wanted to say it to the response to your tone of mentioning that I have no problem waiting to the full board. I had no idea the full board was not going to be here, and I'm a proponent of bringing up these matters when a full board is present. And there have been a lot of instances when the full board has not been present, and this board has taken up things. As a matter of fact, this board took a number of things when I was out of deal back in 2006. But I'm in agreement to wait until the full board, but I just wanted to say that, that you know, this is not an attempt to bring something up in somebody's absence. I had no idea that there was not going to be a full board, but I'm in agreement to waiting for the full board to see if that'll make a helpful discussion after what we need to say about it.
Thank you for your consideration. Remember, my suggestion was it is recommended that it be postponed. The board didn't decide otherwise, if not, because you're gracious in agreeing to let that be postponed until we get a full board. So I am C and D recommended for the next meeting. The remaining items on page three, recommended for consent. Page four, all items are recommended for consent except for three and four at the top of the page. We are talking about utility agreements here. The city attorney has indicated that there are some changes that need to be made in those agreements to make them conform to standard city agreements on this. So if we could substitute for the language there, a motion to approve those agreements entering to the utility service agreement, subject to the city attorney's revision of the contract language to make it standard for city contracts. So it's recommended that we approve those things, but subject to contract revisions by the city attorney.
I believe that merits some discussion, the actual agreement, so.
Okay, would you then like to remove those from the consent agenda? Almond Cox has requested that items three and four be removed to allow some discussion, and certainly that is our policy. Item five, excuse me, I misspoke a moment ago when I said the remaining items. Item five has all sorts of implications that we need to explore fully. It's recommended that that be postponed till the next meeting. The establishment of the elected department deposit policy based upon credit rating.
Am I right in asking that, does three and four impact five at all, or can we do three and four separately from five?
Three and four don't impact five.
Then I'd like to put those on the consent agenda.
Three and four, correct. Okay, Almond Cox has withdrawn his request that they be removed from the consent agenda and agrees with the placement of three and four at the top of page four, back on the consent agenda. Remember, what has been changed there is the approval of those agreements, subject to a redrafting, a revision, as may be the case by the city attorney to get the agreements to conform to standard city policy. The remaining items on the consent agenda on page four. Page five, all items recommended for placement on the consent agenda. Page six.
Page five?
Yes.
I had the number six and seven.
You would like to discuss those?
I do not want them on the consent agenda.
Okay, Almond Perkins requests that item six and seven be removed and for consent from the consent agenda, and certainly we're happy to do that per our normal policy. So six and seven on page five are no longer on the consent agenda. Page six, all items listed there on the consent agenda, except of course, the proposed executive session items.
Anyone else have any corrections or amendments to it? Then do I hear a motion that we approve the official agenda with the consent items and the items be removed as otherwise?
I would move that the agenda be approved, including the items removed from the agenda and placed on the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Tonight, we will do yea and nay simply because we do not, well, we do have video cam in, but we'll still do yea and nay. Okay, approval of the board minutes.
May I vote for the approval of the Mike's 24, 2009?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Brings us up to announcements and comments by the mayor.
We have a second set.
Okay, yeah, that's all set. Do we have approval of the second set of April the 7th?
How many?
Do we have a second? Motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Announcements and comments by the mayor and board of Alderman. Once you notice that our February sales tax were up 16.34%, which is great for an economy that has been under a lot of pressure here. Our community holds steadfast in regard to its growth, very fortunate. Congratulations, Mr. Perkins, for being selected as an inductee into the Starkville High School Hall of Fame. Famous, not famous, famous. Need honor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to just say briefly that thank you for the recognition of this very prestigious honor, and I also appreciate those persons who were involved in nominating me and selecting me, and I am very grateful and thank you for the recognition.
Mr. Perkins? This may back on the first page that we have.
They're not here. The nominated. First thing I was hit with is just take the names off. Yes.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the people that did come out tonight in regards to the sidewalk ordinance and in support of it. I apologize for any inconvenience over us not taking it up tonight due to cramped conditions, but hope that you'll come back to our next hearing.
Thank you, Richard. At this time, it brings us up to citizen comments. It's your turn to take three minutes of anything that you would like to complain or talk about to the board of Alderman. Do we have any citizens in a cramped space tonight that would like to come up and give a cramped three-minute presentation? Go ahead, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Hill, and this is Brother Charles Johnson. We live at 153 North Side Drive. He lives at 154. We have a bad, 152, excuse me, we have a bad drainage problems problem over there. When the downpour, the water just sits right in front of our door. All the debris from the hill comes down. We live down on the bottom of the street. All of it running right now in front of our door. Our uncle Mayo, he was there, he saw it. Mr. Cox, he saw it. Mrs. Self said it before, and I believe Brother Perkins here, he's seen it before, but he, when he was alderman there. But we have a bad problem there. And the other day, they came and put up a project here where they made a, they went into the pipe down underneath there, they tapped into it, put another pipe on top of it, cut that pipe off, and put a lid on it, and what it's doing is collecting debris right there in front of my front door, again, by my side door. And what they did then, instead of fixing the problem, they created another problem. And so we brought this to the board and secreted it off. And then when the downpour, you know, real hard, fell under Mr. Johnson's yard and under his carpet. Sometime, the streets get so full, it may be about a foot, foot and a half, you know, of water that is standing there in the street. And so we only have four drains, one on the north side, one on the south side, and two in the middle there, and they all stay stopped up all the time. If he's not cleaning them out, I'm cleaning them out. So we have a problem with that.
The water run over my carpet, so when I do really get in the car, the water come all over my shoes.
You're right across street from Mr. Hill.
You, by the way, said, and I believe you looked at it some pictures.
We have done some work recently over there to try to alleviate some of the drainage problems. The inlets were undersized over there initially when the development was pretty in. So we've added some curb cuts on the street there. I believe, Mr. Johnson's, to allow that water to get in the flume instead of backing up into the street. In regards to the upstream, what we're trying to do is divert some of that water from actually getting into the street and going into that pipe, which discharges into the creek behind Mr. Johnson's property. Now, we probably need to go out there and maybe make some fine tune adjustments to it, but I think we're trying to alleviate the drainage problem, and we'll keep working on it.
Do certainly agree people along these behind, how the water just stand up here? Most of these land will be bad. In the summertime, it's smelling so bad, rocking hard to death.
That's definitely a drain, a ditch that we need to put on the improvement list, for sure.
Which is on the needs, Mr. Hill.
Well, it's not on the board approve list. But there's some, I've walked back there, I've walked along a good section of that ditch, and there's some severe erosion, there's a lot of trees that are in the ditch, and it really does need a lot of work. I completely agree with you.
Another thing, may I ask, before, could you get with some of the citizen over there and then find out exactly what the problem is? Instead of just coming and just doing something? So you know, we sit down and get together, you know, and just talk about what can be done about it, you know, and try to eliminate it. Appreciate you. I'll be happy to call you. John Hill, 323-0731. Mr. Johnson?
323-16.
Thank you, Charlie.
Just wanted to be clear that I have been working with you with this problem.
Yes, ma'am.
And that this is a longstanding problem before I took over the tenure as Alva Alderman.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want that understood, that this is not something that developed in the last two or three years. It's been going on for a long time.
This has been going on for at least 15, 20 years.
Thank you.
Nobody never, you know, they ain't tried to attempt to do that. Keep complaining, keep complaining about it, but nobody never say nothing.
Who'd you complain to?
The Aldermen's. We talked to Brother Perkins about it, you know, nothing was done about it, you know, so ain't nothing we can do. So that was why we just come here and bring it to you. We tried everything we knew how before we came here.
I encourage you to come to that, I know. I encourage you to come.
No, really, I encourage myself.
Good, good.
It's time for a change, you know, but you did say something about it, you know.
We appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me briefly say, Mr. Hill, and I have made efforts to get a lot of ditches, including yours, done in the past, but I get resistant to this thing that there's no money, and you know, my only limit is what I can do. So, yeah, so once I presented, I state the case, that's all I can do. So once I give my best efforts, that's all I can do.
Thank you very much.
General, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you all for listening. Y'all have a busy day.
Thank you.
Any other citizens like to make a comment? Yes, Gumpall, state your name, Walt Ward.
Thank you. My name is Randall McMillan, Ward 5. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Whitney Hilton, in her capacity, both as an individual and in her capacity as the chairperson of this board-appointed commission on disability. Whitney would like to have attended this meeting herself, but due to the fact that she has a disability herself, that she was excluded from this meeting due to its location on the second floor here of City Hall, which has no elevator. I wanted to come thank the city, the board of Alderman, and Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Spruill personally. Whitney spoke with you on the phone earlier, and she was assured that this will never happen again, and that all citizens, whatever their physical abilities, would welcome at Alderman meetings in the future. And I want to thank you, Ms. Spruill, for assuring her of that, and thank Mr. Mayor and Board of Alderman for that assurance as well.
Thank you. Any other citizen at this time? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Bernard Campbell, Ward 7. I'm back regarding the proposed ordinance, 0901, Chapter 54, Article 3, I'm sorry, Appendix 8, Article 6, Section B. I know this is not on your agenda, but from the last two meetings, I did inform the board that this issue with this wall is a safety issue for my family as well as other people in the community. Like I said, last couple of weeks ago, before the last meeting, I backed out my driveway, could not see, and almost ran over a child. So you know, that still makes me nervous every time I leave my driveway. So I am asking to the board to please, as soon as they can, to relieve the safety issues for my family, as well as safety issues for my neighborhood, to bring this particular ordinance back to the board with some kind of relief for me and my family. Again, at night, it's very scary when you can't see anything. It's very scary when someone's running from behind your house, and you can't tell who it is because there's a nine-foot wall blocking it. Okay? And again, I want you to consider the fact that our home and us, we were there before the nine-foot wall was, and it's also a public mess. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a statement at this time, public hearing? If not, I conclude, the public hearings will close them. It brings us up to public appearances. The first one we have tonight, Mr. Morley, and you're going to give a quarter report on parks, recs, according to State Statute 213737. Okay, if you'll look in your packet, or if you put on the desk here, we've got a lot of numbers and a lot of stuff to go over, but it's really, it's right in front of you in black and white. I'm just going to bring you up the status on the new Sports Flex building, the gym. At voting of Ward 2 and 3 down there today, we had a lot of good comments on it. People were really pleased with it, said it was an asset to Starkville, and I think it was. We have taken over the building. We like a few little odds and ends, which you always do when you're building something But it's, will be open to the public, and you have a brochure here, and you pack it, and I handed some out today pertaining to, technically, we're going to have a ground opening and a ribbon cutting on May the 19th from 5:30 to 7:00. At that time, we'll have some, we've got two racquetball courts in there. Wilson Sporting Goods is sending a racquetball specialist here to put on a demonstration because a lot of, not a lot of people are familiar with racquetball. You know, some of them are, but a lot are not, so we don't have lessons on that. The pools will be open. We've got the safety, you know, you got to have the safety drains and all on them, that will be. And contrary to a lot of people thinking, and a lot of people running for office has campaigned on this, but I want to put it to rest, we are not, not closing J.L. King's pool. A lot of people are saying that we are, a lot of people campaigning on the fact that we're going to close it. We are not. The numbers are down, we've got to try to build the numbers up. We are improving the pool over there. And we use that primarily for our group of people, like the boys ranch and all that that comes over. That keeps the numbers, but if the people that live in that area would work with us and try to get the numbers there, we need numbers in the park. I think it's a pretty park over there. I think the landlay is good. Our ground people keep it up good, but we just need to get the numbers over there. Community garden, we had, and it was, we were about with the community garden, just about like we was with Matt's Dog Park, but it's our dog park now, because it went over real good. If it had been a flock, it would've been Matt's. But we have a lot of interest in the community garden. Now, I don't think we need to go out and build any canneries and all for 8x8 plot. I don't think we'll need to do that. But anyway, surprisingly, a lot of people think the parks is just for kids to play, and that's not the case. We have quilts, and we have a lot of different things, and if you flip through the things whenever you have time, you'll see all of this. But that's about all we have right now, unless you have any questions, and if you want to flip through it here and ask anything, if not, that's all I have for this time. Any questions?
Is the Great Borough Center area being looked at as possible location for a community garden?
Some Josie's circle over here. That's a plot of land that we wasn't using for anything. It's in a good location, it's in a safe area, and we got water there, we got fence put up around it, and it's in the little circle around Josie's circle over there, off of the boulevard. Any more questions? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ottner, do you have a, you have a presentation tonight?
Does the mayor manage to just kind of get this thing started?
Yes. If you would, that'd be fine.
Just quickly, you may remember, several months ago, we executed a wastewater treatment agreement with a lead utility to serve a parcel west of the city of Starkville on Ohio Highway 12. There's been some delays, and one of the conditions of our agreement is for, they had to have a certificate of public convenience and necessity from the Public Service Commission to start sending the wastewater to us. There's been some delays in getting that certificate. So what Mr. Ottude would like for the board to consider is addendum to the agreement, where he would send wastewater to us, pay us for treating the wastewater, but agree not to charge the, any of the residents out there for wastewater services. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Faber, who'll explain some of the legal aspects of the addendum, and then Mr. Ottude is here to answer any questions if you have.
Attorney Faber?
We, Doug and I have been in contact with the Public Service Commission to make sure it was legal for us to do that, and we have been assured by them that it is, and there's certain requirements that have to be met with the E Q. If you look at paragraph five of the addendum, that's the addition that covers us and makes it legal for us to do that, provided that Mr. Ottner complies with what's supposed to be done. So we can feel assured that we're in compliance with all regulations if we go ahead and do this addendum the way they do it. It's going to be paragraph five. I don't know if you have the new one. Then y'all did not receive a copy of the new one. The new agreement that they're asking you to approve, sorry, it'll be number five and number six that I drafted, it will be in compliance with the Public Service Commission and the E Q.
Would you read them for us, please?
I will. Paragraph five says, "Prior to acceptance of any wastewater by the owner, the customer shall present to owner a copy of all applicable Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality permits for the operation of a sewer system, up to and including financial viability sign-off, which has to come from the Public Service Commission itself." That is one of the requirements. Number six, which is an addition to what you have, is, "The customer will ensure that either the letter of credit that has been provided as an inducement entering to this agreement will continue, or customer will post in lieu of the letter of credit, a bond in an amount termed by the city to be sufficient to protect the city, to assure payment of any levies, fines, or expenses that may be assessed against owner. Customer will provide proof to the city, owner, before the expiration of the current letter of credit, which is April 27, 2010, of the continuing letter of credit, or will post a necessary bond as required in this amendment." And that's because we have our requirements to accept the, we require an irrevocable letter of credit. The letter of credit that he has currently expires on that date. So I drafted this to allow him to either give us proof that the letter of credit continues to cover any fines and levies for non-payment, or he has to post a bond in whatever we deem sufficient to continue to have us accept this wastewater. Both these were drafted by me, both these, paragraph five and six.
Do we have any discussion, questions asked from the Alderman?
I'm drawing a picture, other than the legal agreement that that needs to be executed. Can you explain what the city's responsibilities are as it relates to sewer that's outside of the city limits?
Well, basically, to sum it up, if they can get it to us, we have to accept it. Well, we can set the terms of how we're going to accept it, as long as they're legal, which is what we did with paragraph five of this agreement. To sum it up, that's it. We have to accept it. We set the terms of how we're going to accept it in compliance with state law, and that's what we've tried to do. We've also tried to assure that if, for some reason, that we don't get into a situation that we've been in before, that the board is very aware of, where we're accepting wastewater, we're not getting paid for it, and the customer shuts down and says, "We're not going to pay," well, we're required to continue to take it. This posting of the bond, this letter of credit, covers us so that we don't get into a situation that you are all familiar with, where we're owed several thousand dollars that we're having to go and collect now. And so this is our draft, and to try to remedy those two type situations.
But the state, as you said, the state requires us to...
If they can get it to us...
It's the interlocal agreement with Mr. State.
Federal.
Yeah, it's federal.
Federal requirement.
It's a federal requirement, and we have an interlocal agreement between us and MSU.
I just expect someone to ask us, "Why are we doing this?" And that's part of the answer, and the city's protecting itself.
We're protected. We're protected by these addendum to the agreement, so that if we get in a situation where, and not casting any spurs on him, but you're all aware with the situation I'm talking about, we won't have that anymore. We're going to have a letter of credit, and we're going to have a bond, either that or a bond. Because we have a letter of credit right now that's good through 2010, whatever that date was that I read, October, I think, 2010. that date was that I read, October, I think, two thousand and ten, with FDIC insured by
So, do we need a motion or anything from this Board to accept this?
We do. Go on and move it forward, and I would move approval of the addendum to the wastewater service agreement between the city of Starville and Elite Utilities. That addendum that the city attorney read, not the one that was placed in the package revised then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed, nay. Pass it. I like the gentleman. Brings us down to Board Business and considering, consideration made with the Hornets to the Golden Triangle Regional Airport. I think we had one person to apply for that. That was Mr. Frank Childs, who has been serving the term, the remainder of the term of Stuart Vance, I believe. And he's the only one to supply it.
I would move the reappointment of Frank Childs to the Golden Triangle Regional Airport before.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The second item is a planning and zoning for Ward Three, and we have Mr. Jerry Emerson, I believe, that has applied for that.
For reappointment, and I would move the reappointment of Dr. Gerald Andrew Emerson to the Planning and Zoning Commission to represent Ward Three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy in Ward Five, and we approve Robbie Koval, who's on a six-year term commencing on July first, two thousand and nine.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Mayor and Board, I would make, move approval of the reappointment of Pete Melby to the Park Direct Commission of Ward Four.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those opposed, nay. Brings us down to page five-three is all consent. Page four is consent, with the exception that we were talking about table request of board organization to establish another department of positive policies to include listing new credit ratings based upon positive accounts. I believe that's where we are with that, unless I missed something.
That's correct. We're postponing it. It's been tabled.
Okay, it's tabled. All right. We had two items on the personnel to be removed for discussion. Prove the appetite for possession of engineering assistants in the Engineering Department. That's the first item. Perkins, I believe you asked for that, please, removed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Engineer, does your job description call for a civil engineering degree? What degree do you have?
My job description?
Yes, sir.
Just engineering assistant?
No, no. What type of engineering degree do you have? Your degree.
Civil engineer.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, let me just briefly speak to my opposition to this request. The city engineer, in all due respect, is seeking to have this position upgraded to an assistant engineer. The minimum qualification would be upgraded to equivalent to a bachelor's degree from an accredited college, universal with a major course of working civil engineer. So, Mr. Kemp has already attested that he has a civil engineering degree, and I don't know why it would be necessary for us to have two civil engineers in this department. Secondly, the position would cause for an increase in salary with this reclassification from a range of what he's recommending, from forty-three to forty thousand dollars, and is currently paid at thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. And as a matter of trying to save city money, my personal preference would be that, you know, we have a contract engineer on staff and, you know, who's our former city engineer, and he's well-versed in these matters. It seems like if we need some additional work, we could perhaps discuss more hours with Mr. Webb. And speaking of Mr. Webb, you know, when he was here with the city of Starville, he had a multitude of duties, barely making fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year, and all these things that we're advertising for tonight, they're all under one hat. I mean, he worked extremely hard to get all these things done, and it seemed like we're just enlarging bureaucracy by having another person with a major civil engineer, you know. And it seemed like from time to time, we get all these, get many requests here lately to maybe reclassify, upgrade, and, you know, and the city employees haven't had a pay raise in a long time, and we keep doing this, they may not be seeing one anytime soon. So, I think that this position is really an overkill, and I think maybe the city engineer probably could just relook at doing some of these things on his own, or putting some of this work out to Mr. Webb, who's on staff at this time. So, I think that this is really beefing up the city payroll unnecessarily with an increase in salary up to forty-three to forty thousand dollars. And Mr. Mayor, at the same time here, let me go ahead if I can speak to, we can vote separately, let me speak to number seven. And I have no objection to someone inspecting the streets as regard to the improvement roadway, but again, when Mr. Webb was here for a multitude of years, he, as far as I recall, did all this work on his own. We didn't have a separate person doing this, one person doing this, and Mr. Webb just took those responsibility very gracefully, you know, with the salary less than what we pay our current engineer. So, you know, I think we just need to try to buckle down with the staff that we have, and, you know, and I think if it gets to worst-case scenario, the existing engineers should be able to do all these things at the rate that we pay it, or is paying here. So, I just wanted to express that, and I think that, you know, we need to try to conserve money for our city in the way we can, and I think we could do that if we win that regard. So, I just want to express that, Mr. Mayor.
Any other, any more comments in regard to that? I'd like to suggest, when Mr. Webb started, I think we only had a population of about twelve, fourteen thousand. We're up to twenty, probably twenty-two, twenty-three thousand people now. I'm sure if we do, it's expanded.
Mr., do you want to speak in regards to the need for, I guess, an assistant with a higher degree than what we had before?
Well, in the past, in the previous position, we required experience doing CAD, computer-type work. And I think with the amount of projects that we've taken all year and will undertake in the next four to five years, you know, we have a four-year capital plan to do in between twelve and fifteen million dollars worth of projects. We're either facilitating those or we're doing maintenance projects. Really, in order to get all these done in the time that the Board wants, I really need some help in order to kind of facilitate these projects. The difference in an engineer versus in someone with a CAD experience is they're going to have a background and experience doing design, engineering design-related activities. So, on some of the smaller projects, they would be able to do some of the designing and do some of the construction drawings. I mean, I feel like, of course, it would be all under my supervision, but it would enable us to do a lot more in-house and would enable us to do that things a lot quicker. I just, you know, we are, this is beefing up the staff, but we're really beefing up the amount of projects that we're trying to do, too. So, I think that in order to meet those expectations, it's something that's really necessary.
Move approval of the request?
Second. In further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. It was described that this was an assistant city engineer. It is not. It's an engineering assistant. It was also represented that this would be a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, which is not exactly what the job description calls for here. You have a bachelor's degree and have taken a lot of civil engineering courses, which is what it says here, but not have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. But it's engineering assistant, not assistant city engineer.
Right. And they would, this is not also requiring for their professional engineering license either, it's just that...
Right. Just that they be able to do the heavy exam and pass it, which is their basic.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion for the approval of number six and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Brings us down to number seven, which is, I would think was asked to be removed, Mr. Perkins.
I haven't discussed all of it.
We already agreed.
So, do we have a motion on number seven?
I'll move approval.
On second.
Motion is second, and we approve number seven. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Brings us down to page six, and I believe that all that is consent, and brings it down to the executive session.
But first, Mr. Mayor, I would approve, move approval of all the items placed on the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the items on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. It brings us down to executive session. Do I hear a motion? We go into closed session to discuss the executive session.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss whether or not the executive session...
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay.